Recording in progress.
Guys, have a lot. Any discussion? Let's vote. Justilou? Yes, votes. Yes, justi Rosie.
Hi.
Justi Abnath? Yes, thank you. Move to the calendar. Thank you, Ice Nervous. Calendar 2022, CEO, take it away.
Yes, so for this school year 2022 to 2023, it's finally approved. DPW will take us up at 2 o'clock. So it's a pretty dismissal, gives us more room for after school and also time to have meetings, concentrate on our accreditation. So 2:00 PM. 2:00 PM is, we ended up having 68% voters for 2:00 PM or early dismissal. That's good, based on the surveys that we passed out.
And that also went out to the parents?
Those are from all parents.
Were there any concerns?
Actually, no, the remaining 32% is just saying status quo. But there were comments, specifically comments, that say this is easier because when they leave the work, they can still go back.
Like a lunchtime.
Yeah, it's more of a lunch break. Because before, if it's 3 o'clock, when they get stuck over here, by the time they go back, they can check in again and then they have to go home.
Does that mean also like, because you know, early dismissal, so would you, would you, or do you foresee like extra short PD to kind of get everybody stay, stay in tune with what's happening?
Yes, and that's the reason why we wanted to accommodate it for, because we need to, we need to catch up and fast track because during the two years of the pandemic, we were just like hating school, we were being sensitive to the teachers. But now we're all 100%, just like how we were doing it before after school. We go to our domain groups and make sure that the accreditation self-studies are in preparation for when they come back.
Thank you, I see number two.
I see number two, the pre-service training is set for this Monday, August 1st. This will be a general session that includes all employees across the board. We have an agenda already, basically just welcome everyone and then share with them all the changes, the positive changes that we have, especially with increments or the adjusted compensation schedule. And then like the what to expect this year and then to introduce everyone to the new employees from the org chart to present it to them because it's finally approved and their positions are filled already. And make sure also that it's not an organizational chart or a functional chart that only is focusing on the chain of command, but mainly the chain of communication. And that the board is supporting everyone and that the good things that we have, like construction going on, where the principal's office will be brought down, the discipline office from the cafeteria will now be moved to their home with the admin office. And that that will be the lounge to welcome our incoming employees because before, when their lounge was beside the LRC, you still can't, that's your time alone and they still have to be quiet because there's students in the next door for the LRC. But now it's inside and they have their own private room, privacy. It's closer to the cafeteria, so when we have leftover lunch, it's, we give them out to the employees. Somebody gets to, yeah, they like that. Before, because we deliver, they have to go walk all the way to the cafeteria and ask, is there any extra?
What time is that?
For what? For the pre-service training? They haven't said it, but usually it's actually 7:30 to 3:30.
Everybody's included, right?
Yes, everybody's included, but the first morning, 8 o'clock, most likely is.
In that pre-service, I mean you just mentioned earlier about the new employees. We've seen, we've seen some information where employees just get a key and they walk. Can you build in like an orientation for the new employees? Tools doing what? If you also they get to know? What are the expectations and everything?
We already have that, even their IP forms, we already set that up. So when you're a, for an employee, your first day, you have your form giving you all your login information, your email address, your RenWeb account and everything. So what I've asked with the help of acting HR and Ms. Badet, because basically this is the team to welcome new employees. I said, call everyone and ask them to join the pre-service training on August 1st. And then moving forward, every time we have a new employee coming in, we will set a four-hour at least orientation line to go over the employee handbook. Because I remember as a teacher, every school I went into in Spargo, we get paid this orientation, this is the expectations of the school, check in, check out, this is the attendance policy of the students because we all have to be aware.
And along with that, you should be able to give them hard copies.
Yes.
So they, and then let them sign up for the hard copy. So there is no, there is no saying, I did not know about it, the check that I tried. Because once you have the four hours of session, you should be able to give them the hard copies of those that you have discussed so they can sign up on it. And encourage the employees, if they have any concern, to go to the employee in charge of, you know, meaningful clarification.
It's not just like you do it on your own or research on your own. They want to know everything that they had to go on, that's what they have to comply with.
But, but also at the same time, if they have any ideas, you know, on how to ask them, part of the GAKS family, they will help them. So if you could, I'd like to see like a very short survey after all your orientations start.
Oh, that's survey.
Yes, because that would counter the ones that we have seen previously.
Yes, that's a very good documentation and feedback right away.
And an affirmation whether that really, that's.
How it's.
That affirmation whether it's been appreciated or it's just like, ah, whatever.
The same thing, no changes.
You're going to change the environment a little bit at a time because this was not ever a focus from, I think, from the day that we put together this course. But we're getting, we're learning, we're getting better. So we just really need to have committed and long-term employees here.
And it's good that the employees really know the process and the procedure that they have to follow.
Oh my God. The employees also need to know that in dealing with your immediate supervisor, if a decision is not something that they want to further appeal that decision, that they can do that, that ultimately you as a CEO. There's a process of appeal, it's really, we already have that in our policy. So, but them knowing it, yeah, make them a little bit more comfortable.
More of the awareness.
And not to be afraid that, oh, if they go beyond, you know, but they also have a responsibility, letting their immediate supervisor know that, you know, I am appealing your decision. It's okay.
Yes, as long as we follow the chain, the process and the standards. Yes. So after the first, which is the general session, we actually are still going to get together, Ms. AJ and I, I'm waiting for her agenda so that I can put it all in. The next day, 2 to the 5th, which is a Friday, Nifty non-local trainers will be here. So they are already set as the schedule. So like, for example, elementary, they will train in the morning and then the middle school in the afternoon, but they will be here the whole day.
Actually, I have refreshment for them.
Second, third, fourth and fifth.
So they can feel the warm welcome. Because you know that, I think for them visiting us, right? It's something that, you know, they would more value because, you know, it's prepaid. So they're actually, they're coming in, it's a face-to-face.
It's a face-to-face, that's the contract that we had to pressure I have a project while I was in Canada.
I would be interested in just listening to your. Yeah, maybe not the whole entire time, but you know what, we can do QI's on the Zoom so we can hear that even when we're at home.
Yeah. The two main topics that they are giving our instructors, focus on is the CMC, which is the Connecting Math Concepts and the decoding for the middle school. Because just as a refresher too, we're shifting from RMSE with the serious addition to RMT, which is a transformation.
That's an updated one, because for so long, nobody had actually thought on an updated Nifty material.
Ah, see, they're not following what.
No, no, the problem is we have to use our local money instead of using the ESF. Somebody did not think of additional things that we need to kind of like update our digital controls. So we lost that coming out of the trouble money instead of getting it from our ESF. It's sad, it's very sad.
That's a thousand three money that we can use.
To pay another, another egg or vendor, which we don't have anymore, thank God. You know, I'm saying in your program that's 10,000 dollars, but somebody just can do it, so it's okay.
But I think we have to do things to replace the old because we're going to a new school, right?
We have to check the local money.
Yeah, instead of using our local money. But sometimes we have, just like I, an experience, I just wanted to share with you. We're closing the fiscal year and I see that we still have a lot of reserve just because we have the ESF and ERP. And sometimes we wanted to really maximize and use it, that's why right now, maybe that's the reason too why we, we had to use the local funds for that.
Yeah, so, so I said, we're wrapping up and this is very normal, we got bump. You guys start earmarking that. Once you earmark that money, the word is not earmarked, the word is actually encumbered. You have to encumber that money, so that locks in, get locked in. Submit all of that now with DOE, make sure that those are the ones that you really encumbered, those monies that, rather than returning it, because you really need that. I mean, on the long term, especially, you know, you think long term. You don't think, oh, we have enough, right? But you're always going to be needing stuff, right? So make sure you encumber all the rest of the money that you have for this. We don't want to return.
Yes, but since you mentioned that and I don't wanna, which will, actually, I can go back to that later on, on the product later, but we'll do that. Just so we can, so 2 to 5, that would be, so while the elementary is getting trained by Nifty, the middle school or high school has their own training sessions as well with the other programs like M-School, which is for the, it's like an online library. Vansai, which we're still using under post 360, even if it's free. We're also having the training on using RenWeb, especially for the new teachers and how to maximize the use of RenWeb, especially for the new teachers. We need reminders on how to now communicate with the parents. We don't have to email them from our one email address, it's just directly.
Do you ever gauge your new faculty as to their computer literacy program? Computer literacy to the point that you know that they can do Excel, they can do a little bit of this, they can do this. Things that needs to be done by a teacher, right? So you don't have to get stuck with mano-mano, like a manual, manual preparation of their lessons and stuff like that. Because the more organized they are, the more, the more into they are on technology, the easier for them to deliver their work.
Yes.
Because if it's going to be all written and stuff like that, you can't do.
Yes.
You know, at least know how to cut and paste, at least know how to, you know, at least those little things in technology must, must, must be. Because I heard that some, some old school teachers from.
They're still using their notes?
No, they cannot actually zero in even on the, what is the?
Just by reading their emails sometimes.
Yeah, yeah, they cannot even do that. Or even use the major instrument that active or platform, the whole situation is right now. Because they cannot be, they're not technology savvy or equipped. So they might not do.
So that's good, yeah, thank you for reminding because I remember.
Just a quick session, because if you're going to bring me a good IT now, I think one, one session, one four-hour session, how to do this and how to do the, how to do cut and paste, how to do this, I would even sit there because I know I'm not, I always have people to do this for me. But you know what I'm saying? Let me get that time, that you'll be able to, to make sure that your teacher are at least, I think the technology is savvy on the one that they have to do as teachers, right?
Especially now, right? Everything is computerized, you have to really know. And that's why during those times, we also have set the training of how to use the spectrum because we received the 37 other ones and they're in their respective classrooms. So we already set for.
That's a new one instead of.
This one, exactly this one.
What's it called? You guys don't use.
We still use, but we order 37 extra for the modular rooms or the smaller rooms because the promethium is heavier and bigger.
So the spectrum, is it, is it capable of doing long distance?
Yes, so like now.
When we were doing, when we, when we were talking about career tech, right? With that nursing program in the high school? That if our nursing program can connect because we're pretty much on the same time zone with this excitement, I don't see any mind. But they, the two teachers could actually combine their resources and have the students go through, you know. Yeah, it's very interesting because it's. My, my any classes with the Saipan PSS, I have 15, one second cohort, is actually all virtual. The only thing that they need to do, and I think even if they have to do the clinicals, what's that her name? Your nurse, could actually do the clinical part of the operation. You know, I'd like to be able to do it one day, but you know, it cannot be a whole lot. Maybe just a few students just to try to synchronize or get them all. Because PSS based that under the ESF, like they have budgeted for my school to be able. And this is the second cohort.
And that would be really beneficial for the teachers.
Yeah, so we just make sure that this.
Definitely possible. But going back to the survey, I really appreciate you brought that up because you said we redo the surveys. I remember we did that. So now that you're reminded, we have to follow through.
Yeah.
Because usually we have surveys, the teachers, to just rate their technological abilities. We had that, we presented that to the self-study team, the cognate, and we have all those data, which reminded me, thank you. Because that means it doesn't stop there, we have to do that here.
Yeah, I mean, if the result of one of the surveys is showing that employees are saying, oh, I don't know what's going on, you know. So there's change that around by establishing some procedures to make, not only to make them feel welcome, but to be knowledgeable. Who do they go to if they have a question about payroll? About, just about anything.
Maintenance, but yeah.
Because you know, you have a lot of retirees, right? That might come to our door, some of them maybe who with no technology, some of them would not know. Some of, maybe would know, but not to the extent that we want them to know, we want them to learn. Because I know she's very good, she will be, and we have a few teachers that are really, really good. Those are really gentle, right? But I think preparing our teachers to be, you know, it doesn't matter whether they're chumor teachers, that there's only teaching. But the, the, this little thing that we can help them to understand and be, be.
Basically for professionalism.
Yeah, for their professional. Going back to the, I thought I heard you earlier. Initiative certificate, by the way.
Yes.
See, initiative certificate from GAKS that says you have completed this training for blah, blah, blah. And you can show that to Konya, sorry, Justilou. You show that, look, we do our own internal training of our people here and, and. What is a small certificate?
And it's never going to help them when it's here, but whatever they have to do outside of their home.
They say, hey, look, I did this training in Microsoft and I know how to put, I know how to cut and paste, that's all they know.
It's best practice to put it into writing. You have that to be as well.
And that's part of their first professional file, their personal.
In their jackets as well.
Jackets that would show, hey, she's been going in all this training.
And the survey tool will be good, but then you can look at it and see what is it that we need to.
As a matter of fact, your PD and this thing that you're going to be doing, just give them a little bit of something that you attended this and then, you know, the. I mean, those, those things would really get to actually validate things that we're doing here. Right? And then they will know that we're tracking their, 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 uh, their, our, their, to be, to be really good employees of the charter school. Because as soon as you give them like a mini graduation after they finish those things, it's not all the time. But you know, this thing that, especially this one that you're calling, I'm beginning to score, what is that?
That's like one, or the Nifty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, Nifty will issue that. Nifty will definitely, make sure Nifty issues these guys certificate, right? And, and other things, more than we do small, small training sessions that we do like that, we do. Well, it'd be nice, you add value to what you have given these guys. And then it's something that they will carry with them, whether they stay with us or leave with us. They will just say, wait, I want some training, whether it's just, you know, whether it's just this or whether it's just that, right? So just keep that in mind, make us more professional in our ways of meeting. So I'm going back to that with the, I thought I heard you earlier that the middle school teachers will be receiving a session on decoding.
Decoding, yeah, because middle school, this is still a part of the DI.
Okay.
Because we still have DI on the, in the middle school. It's part of what they, it's not from RMSE, but it's basically just for them to catch up because there are still students who are below the level. So they still have to use the same materials on that part. Because the RMT, which is the newer materials, are only from K2. So we stick with the old, the old series, I guess, from, for, I can say for the middle school. And because we have a few who had been Nifty training from them, so we wanted the middle school teachers to have that direct training from the non-local. And during the times that they are with Nifty, we set up two rooms already for the Nifty sessions, which is D104 and D103. So it's already ready.
Comfortable?
Yes, because it's a smaller group. There's two groups for the Nifty training. So we set it up, they requested for a device, so the spectrum.
They made it a little special for the people that come in. Put some lays that, you know, welcome them in this call and have a little bit of tea and something. For them just to, just a little bit of tea and cookies, whatever you guys, something light because they have to start working. So just to welcome them, you just lay them up, you know, lay them up with some chile. Whatever they, it's a topic that I welcome them, right?
Chile, the last day.
Chiles are good, chile is always good.
Yeah, always good.
They keep that in, and take it with us.
Yeah, instead of the flowers, the chile.
Chiles are good with GAKS thing on it, hopefully, right? A little GAKS thing on it.
They definitely do something for them the last day.
The last day as well, right? Give them a kiss, a kind of thing. How many days are they going to be here? Three days?
Uh, two to five, so four days.
Four days, so the last day you can.
Four whole days, yeah.
Like a kiss, a style, something like that. I'll, you'll probably let me know the orders.
And all of these.
From the, you know, from the local vendors, so they make the chicken get away. Either chicken or fried chicken are good. Oh, man, fried chicken is so good. So you're not allowed to have that on the, on the yearly schedule? No, all protein, girl, all that. You know, now I'm getting good at that. The only thing I've lost are all the pills. That they take to the.
Pills.
Because we're.
And then eight, six, seven is the weekend. We go back to the Monday and the Tuesday for another training session. It's going to be whole day and of course we set up usually the afternoons for the teachers to go back to their lavatories and start preparing. There would be one day again that everyone will get together, it's a general assembly to do, like to final, final.
Rather.
For the day and we're going to plan to have something like that before we, it's like to welcome the school year.
Including the graduates, right?
Yeah, before, before actually the first day of to welcome students on the.
Just, just let us know exactly what. When they are, it's so, yeah, or they're full, then get them going, yeah.
We were hoping that the construction in the cafeteria will be done. I spoke to them, they said they will try to finish it, they will come here tomorrow and work it, just to make sure that it's ready for the Monday reservice training.
So does that mean when the construction is done, we, will we have to reapply for the free? We're getting out of CNB, we're not going to go CNB, we're, we're always discussing to you. Because the CNB requirement is, is not only tedious, but it's very hard to comply with, with the facility that we have, and this is not our own building.
Yeah.
So I, I think, I think, if you look at the numbers and I think you guys can look at the numbers on what really could be, could be saved versus to what, what it will do to the school paperwork wise and stuff like that, that's why we have our own gap. So the construction is not for that purpose, the construction is to move. When we have a new facility, hopefully we can go under.
Yeah, we can, yeah. Because you will have everything ready.
This one will not pass and they will not, and they will not get as new pitch and stuff.
Yeah, actually, because the one we, the application that we submitted is under CNB, but it's not our own. So it's under MSMC, meaning we have our own vendor outside. So we will pass, it's just that when I spoke to Mr. Sean Monforti, he said that the only reason why it's taking so long is because there's only two people left in charge for the state office for, uh, state, state for the CNB.
It's okay, so we can wait.
But he was very positive and gave me other alternatives, just like what you're saying. Maybe you don't have to go to CNB, you just have to write to the acting superintendent right now and say that, um, let's go under DOE.
Yeah.
Because we're under DOE, so whoever their vendor is, it's just like going to give. Yeah, the thing though, we said that the food is not very good.
So that's okay, that's fine. The food, so that's, so it's, you know, throwing more food.
Yeah, a lot of the kids do not eat with a lunch.
Yeah, we need to teach the kids that.
Will be healthy.
Well, you know, like the fruits, the apple, the orange, not to throw them. They can take them home for their baby brother, baby sister.
Yeah, and Mr. Monforti was very, very nice to help us out because another option that he gave is we'll have our own, not CNB, but go through them, something like that.
Yeah, because we have, we have the numbers to support. About 99.9% of our students are really on the level, right? So that's enough to support the assistance of the USDA.
Yeah.
So we will, hopefully, hopefully we can push that.
And even our ISB for the new vendor, for, for I F B, he also helped us on like, making sure that we don't end up with the cheapest.
Yes.
The lowest bidder, so it's a multi-step, five-step, right? Or multi, multi steps, I F B, so that you can somehow evaluate the vendor and then you can improve them rather than, that's the lowest, even if they serve not so good food. And he was very helpful, so we have, we're following the template, we're close to, I just have to review, right? Which means.
They're very helpful, right? They're very helpful, right?
It's okay when we have a university, when we have the university, they give you your own bedrooms there.
Our own kitchen or?
Your own bedrooms and kitchens, so you don't have to leave the campus anymore.
Have our own refrigerator.
So first day of classes is August 10. Nine, by the way, sorry, I didn't insert. Nine is the pre-orientation for the higher students.
August 9?
Nine, yes.
What, what is that?
Pre-orientation, I mean the orientation for the parents and the students. Usually the kindergartens will come in and the teachers will show them their rooms.
That's the orientation in the morning?
Um, we haven't set that up yet, but usually it's in the morning for the.
And that's just for the kindergarten?
Uh, for the elementary.
Are you gonna put them in a canopy outside, or are you gonna have, put a room for them? Cafeteria?
Cafeteria is where we do it before and then uh the teachers bring them to their rooms.
Thirteen canopies that they got out of the, fourteen out of the E S F.
Yeah, which will be.
The E S F expiring?
This September.
Yes, good, you have to use some.
Yeah, so old business, which is there, we are gonna give you the report. Federal grants, E S F two and A R P, so let's go first for the E S F two. Out of the equipment, I just wanted to go by um category for the equipment. Um, the total allocation is eight hundred twelve thousand or close to eight hundred thirteen thousand. Um, keyed in is six hundred fifty-four thousand, around six fifty-four. Um, converted to P O is five hundred ninety-two, so just pending sixty-one thousand five hundred five.
Sixty-one thousand, is all that's left?
That's not um, that pending or purchase orders, they were keyed in. But in totality, the difference is one hundred fifty-nine thousand for equipment. And I would let you know that we keyed them all in, it's just that we're under budget. Uh, is it under budget? Yes, under budget, meaning when we put it in, I, let's say, I said. I mean, uh, five thousand is this, but actually, actually they ended up, the, the cost is just like even below five thousand. So we cannot visit anywhere.
So they're just requisition status and no P Os yet?
Yes, and, but the difference is we keyed it in, um, but the one hundred fifty-nine is mainly because. All the, the, the budgeted items that we submitted to E S F is lower than that. I, I mean, we, we gave a bigger amount, but actually the cost is just lower.
So when we submit the requisitions, who does the follow, we need to do follow-up so that they turn in the purchase orders?
Me, the three of us.
What's the timeframe? From the time you turn in, the requisition to the time that it becomes a P O?
It depends, um, there are some that, um, because D O E already requested for the same items. It's faster, but if it's a special request, like only for gas. Look, because the people, also their short staff and then people who are looking into the procurement, they would only go by.
Because we don't want to, we don't want to.
What they have already available.
We don't want to lose that money, very important that we do follow-up, I know, makes your overwork and. We're hoping that the exposition will be filled, you know, to, kinda like East Suburb, you know. We cannot afford to lose that money, please. So, so what was the projected, the, um. About overall, overall sort of, will you be able to?
Out of the two point, two, two million and seventy-five thousand, we already, um.
That's A R P?
No, this is E S F.
Still E S F, okay, well, well, how much were we giving it for, million, right?
No, that's for A R P now, for E S F two is only two, yeah, two million and seventy-five thousand.
Yeah.
So our difference is only six hundred twelve thousand.
It's not bad.
Six hundred and twelve?
Yes, yeah, so we already.
Anything else we can look at to purchase?
Yeah, example that I would like to inform you, like, we requested busing and the meals. That is a certain amount, so that's already fifty thousand off the bat right away, I said.
Very expensive.
But we cannot use it because we're limited, they are saying that there's no contract, um. Uh, there should be a contract between D P W and the, the federal grants. So that they can be the, they can do the service. But because there's no contract and no one, uh, no other schools requested for busing, of course, it's not gonna be used.
But how can we make it happen from our end? Could, could you take the initiative to communicate with D P W? And get something and writing from them?
So, so how they did it is, D P W is servicing the students anyway, but it's. The funding was, came from something else, like the governor rather than the A R P. And the reason why.
It's very specific, yeah, that's why, if you tell the governor this and that, and that, the governor cannot. Bear off from the, from the stipulations. Yeah, that's, that's one of the major issue why they didn't use it for this, why they didn't for that. He can, she cannot use it because it's very restricted on, on the use of.
And same as the, same as the, every, same as every grant has its own.
Yeah, specific.
Requirements or qualifications.
Well, you know what, the bottom line is, we don't want to return any money, we, very critical, so.
So what can you suggest?
Order more filing.
Yes, order.
But the six hundred twelve thousand basically, cannot, because it's allocated to equipment. And even if we, we, if it won't be approved, because if I request for eight hundred laptops. We only have seven hundred sixty, they will only give you seven sixty because they always go by the number of students.
And we got everything of that.
But you need a few just in case something like that, it, it's monitored, it's gonna be the.
They're, they're the one monitoring it, right?
It's U S D O E and, U S D O E to G D O E and.
This, this is very critical, because it's the federal government, the same thing to keep that, because we are giving also the A R P money to run. So we, we're a little bit, just like what we do, we have.
Very strict, that's the problem with federal spending, it's strict, yeah.
Because there are repercussions, if you do that.
Do they provide flexibility in moving funds? Between and among the.
Yes, so that's what we did, um.
But you're not allowed, right? Are you allowed to move money from different categories to personnel?
Oh, no. None, none from the grants during COVID, it's for, for payroll, no, nothing.
No, like.
Except for stipends.
Positions.
No, not at all.
Except for stipends?
Stipends, the stipends for summer, that's why we.
But not throughout the school year.
It has to be operated. And then for us too, we, we're limited, we cannot, it can't be accessible for us or a building, something that stays. It can't be, it has to be movable or.
Yeah, cannot be a year.
So for supplies though, um, the total, um, budget for supplies is six hundred thirty-nine thousand. Um, we keyed in four hundred twenty-eight thousand already and then. Um, converted to purchase orders is two hundred eighty-seven thousand. Um, so waiting for pending purchase orders is one hundred forty-one thousand.
Not much anymore, but you can use that.
Again, the difference of two hundred eleven from what we keyed in and from the total allocation for supplies. Is because we're always, um, the budget that we put in is higher. And then the, the actual cost is lower.
So you rolled, you rolled down the balance to get for another.
For another purchase. Um, for the contractual part, we were allocated, or we were, we had the budget for six hundred twenty-three thousand. And, um, keyed in is already three hundred eighty-two thousand. Um, this is the hard part because of the contracts, right? Um, the ones that are converted to P O is only fifty-five thousand five hundred. Um, contracts mean, mean, um, how do we, what do we pay to other vendors? Ebsco, other programs, we put in here the NIFD training for us to go to the conference. But they said this fiscal year, no one is supposed to meet, it only starts on fiscal year twenty twenty-three. It says. Mute, oh, um, professional training, but then we, how can we get trained professionally? We have to ask for vendors or, um, to come over.
It's a special, it's specialized.
So again, it takes longer, socio-emotional is part of that. Um, the contract to, for the socio-emotional, um, programs, we already, it's only twenty-five hundred. It's a, we already had the sample, it's code saber lining, it's like self-care and the teachers or employees who go in there.
Every student bring it in?
We, this is a vendor, they provide the services, it was recommended. Uh, no, it, it's U S, we already put that, keyed that in up to now, no one, no one has looked into it. Because not all the schools look for the same vendor.
Are we looking also at, uh, a contract, contracting service for the D I?
Uh, we keyed that in, like for example, the training, um, but the, this training, we couldn't wait for the. For the, for the August E S F two, so we, we used the logo.
I am, I'm just talking about the, the consultant for D I, remember? Which came and did a study and looked at the different data?
Oh, the, um, not just for D I, so the, 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 the outside, uh, Ms. Delma? The one for the results, uh, we're not actually looking into that because all the programs now has its own pre-assessment.
No, that's good.
So there was no need.
No need anymore, so for example, this is a program, the one that we're going to implement this year is the. It's a reading book program or a reading comprehension program, it's called Renaissance, and then it will grade you. As a child from K to twelve reads a book, a material, you will answer questions like how you comprehend it. And it scores the child, and it will say, okay, um, you're in level one, now you can move to level two book. So it has its own assessment.
Going to compile all of that information to determine the effectiveness of that program?
So the key people who are in the curriculum, like Mister Frankie as the curriculum, D I. Um, there's five or six people for that specific program who are the, the, I guess, the. Assessment group, we read the reports, because it's automatically produces the results. We just have to, um, translate or give the students feedback, and the report is there.
Will, will you be able to look at that and provide input, you know?
Um, yes, so it's automatic, it's a built-in assessment.
Alright.
All we have to do is print the reports and, uh, show to, to the board, show to the parents and give the reports to the. Uh, the feedback to the, the end user. Um, even our, yeah, we'll go to that later. So they're all intertwined, so that's the balance of it. And then others, there's nothing, so the difference basically from the two million seventy-five. We already keyed in one, one point five.
Yes.
So the balance pending purchase orders is five hundred thousand.
Oh, we should be able to.
Which we should be able to, it's not too much really compared to what we lost previously because. Um, again, I, I'm sure that the reason for not, um, maximizing it is because we're always, um. Um, over the, that shit, you're overestimating, yeah, we, we overestimated. And before, because we only had like, when they, when they told us, key in all your requests, we have two weeks. How can you spend two million? I remember now the pressure before, I can be buying two million. How many P P S do you need to put it in? So when you think of something, I just go online, what's good now? And then I, I really don't have the time to.
Get useful from teachers too, right?
Yes, we did, we did, but during that time, we want them to focus on, um, educating the kids before. And we wanted to look for, um, support and materials and programs that will help them teach the kids. By the time that it arrived, we're all face to face, so we ended up having four team in closed tents. Um, during that time, we requested under here.
But teachers could use them as resources though, right?
Yes, yeah, but the equipment though, like for example, in closed tents. Um, E S F is for you to, or A R P is for you to be able to extend the classroom. Because we are supposed to have, to follow social distancing, so in order to do that. To comply, I said, let's order in closed tents, extra for five rooms, so that.
And is that air con too?
Yeah, with the air con, and you would see we have.
That's why you need a tiny tub of big, so we can do this there.
Nine outdoor air cons.
How much are they?
Um, the tents is four thousand each.
Oh, trusty road.
Yeah.
I tell you, we that can find, find the.
Everyone is three thousand each, so they are tagged.
How about the bathroom, do they already have bathroom on it, or no?
No, no, only air conditioning.
Were air conditioning and.
Yeah, I want my yard.
And then they wanted to deliver already, I've been holding back because I said, where can we, so, can you tell me? I, I come to the installation.
What's the?
Twenty by forty.
Twenty by forty?
I want to use for wedding parties.
Really?
Yes, so yesterday.
Wedding party.
And yesterday, so just like, where are we gonna store this? I've been holding back because it's a G D O E and I remember. Um, the container when we ordered it in E S F one, it arrived, but there's no pudding. So when, when we ordered the enclosed tents, I said, let's make sure that it comes with a, it's not with a pudding, but the assembly also. So they said, we're ready to deliver and we're going to set up fourteen, where are we gonna put that, where, where are we gonna park it? So I said, what do I do? Cause definitely we, we, we can't open fourteen, um, in closed tents, twenty by forty.
And you don't need it now.
Yeah, so I asked, I said, they said, how many boxes per tent? It's ten boxes per tent. Ten times fourteen is a hundred forty boxes, and I said, can you send me the dimension?
Snap.
Yeah, yeah, so yesterday, I said, we store that, can we put it on the roof or something? And then I realized, oh, it comes with free, uh, assembly. So I called them this morning, I said, assemble two, one here.
And then we'll stop.
And we'll put all the rest in one by the building.
Yeah.
Because we. Assemble one and put the rest.
Assemble, um, yesterday I said, assemble one, but this morning. Um, I called and confirmed, please assemble two, and I confirmed with Ms. H A that won't be, uh, uh. A safety issue for the kids, because that place actually, no one goes there and we don't want kids to be there because they're hiding. So with that, then we have extra storage. Problem solved, and then maybe, because one is extra, they said that.
They go to my house, right?
No, I said, for our welcome party or welcome to the school year, we'll all go there. Have a different P O instead of the cafeteria, hopefully it doesn't rain so that we can do our luncheon there. And try out the air con and.
You ordered folding table that you need a chair.
We don't know where to put that, so, also, just to give you an update, replace all the old ones that you have, put the new ones in.
Okay, moving on, let's go.
Moving on, um, A R P, um, I am so sorry, Ms. Jamie, do you have the total? I, we are not focusing on A R P right now, so last week, what I asked, what I gave Ms. Jamie is to. The specifics of what to order and start, so she is probably already sent to. Sent to, sent to the vendors for.
Just keep us updated on what's, uh, when, when this expires next year, right? So just give us. Just give us a, a running balances and, and all.
So out of the four million sixty-one thousand seven hundred forty-nine, total requisition for, um, keyed in is about three hundred eighty-one thousand. And, um, and only, only two hundred forty, two hundred forty-nine thousand have been converted to purchase orders. So we have a difference of about three point six million.
And that two hundred forty sum is the two summer pro, the summer program that was really paid for. Um, the balance is the, the, a big chunk also is the after-school program, which we did not maximize or use. Last, last year, so that's the reason why we have to somehow use it, it's.
Yeah.
So, so because.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because I was telling, uh, Ms. Ann that there's the after, after-school money from the caregiver money of, of NIDA that has about ninety-eight.
Still, but we still have our own.
Oh my god.
So I, I, I know what to do with that, it's gotta have, that, that has to go under A R P. And unfortunately, the public school cannot be paid by that, when I asked, Ann, she goes like, we have the. We have the after, after, after-school money. That's the same way.
But the after-school program will be beneficial for our kids.
To convert your bridge to a care uh, after-school.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll make sure that this pre-service training will. Will encourage the staff to participate and and volunteer for after-school.
Not the after-school is for all grade or just the high school?
For all. And it's not really for academics. The, the program um, re- requirements is to. Like, like something that they can do, like. Um, um, not, not just words, but. Something more practical because during that time with COVID, we wanted to focus on.
I really would like to see uh.
They'll all be there.
Except the debate club, it's a different name. Uh, the debate club or national. Because those kids can go off island and compete like.
Yes.
Dancing and all those things as their team is singing. Organizations, the National Junior Honor Society, a National Honor Society. You know, those, those organizations really provide students the opportunity to uh, provide services on the network.
And we can use, we can bring back the SARS program, but this time we won't have the local. We have, won't have to use it because we're gonna have.
Yeah, we stopped this time, we ran out of money.
And at the same time.
So this is money is an opportune time for the parents to even appreciate what we have. Yeah, because they cannot come out from work at cer- certain time, at least there is an extended.
That would help them.
Yeah, of course. Oh my god.
Really have to get the commitment. Now, we're, we're thinking now, it's really double purpose because having the two o'clock dismissal. Would give the teacher some time to, oh, we have, because before we dismiss at three, they. By the time they wanted to just go home and not stay here and.
So, so basically from two o'clock to three o'clock, is that something that all the teachers. Are expected to stay on campus?
Uh, yes, because the time is, yes, the time duty hours is still seven thirty to three thirty for the teachers. So they still have to stay till three thirty.
Yeah.
Although, um, they have to make sure that no students are here and then they have to prepare. It just gives them time to prepare now because there's no more students to supervise. But they are back in their classrooms, preparing for their lessons and at the same time have the time to get into their dummy groups and. Collaborate for DLCs and. So, um, it's like a, a more breathing room, I guess, for them so that. Because you cannot give them extra prep time at least.
Yeah, so so they know that they are to be on campus.
And the time is still seven thirty to three thirty. So going back, so for that ARP, are we good with ARP? We'll, we'll, we'll make sure we'll update you. We just wanna. Use, we have the pressure from SBB as well to just use a ESF two because it's closing in a month or in two months. Um, modular classroom repair and maintenance, um, I've men, well, we've mentioned that it. The replacement of the floors was entered in ARP. We gave the vendor, there's one vendor who responded for the whole, it was disapproved. Um, I know for a fact, the reason is because anything over a hundred thousand for construction has to go on the. Um, which means again, we can't do this until, so it has to be lower. Um, than the hundred thousand so that it will be approved. And again, I know for a fact that the. For pyramid office of GDOE, they're focusing on the common thing that you need rather than construction of. Or construction of uh, there's, their construction probably.
But we still need this.
Yes, so we have.
To get the, those classrooms.
Yes, so we have two, two plans which I wanted to share with you. So, um, I have somehow revised the, the work order for the. For the classroom so that it would go lower than a hundred thousand. Instead of ripping off everything and replacing. Um, it's more going to be just put on additional plywood, more of reinforcement because that will lessen the work. Which means less budget, which will reduce it to a hundred thousand. Um, and then instead of the tiles, uh, I mean, it includes also the floors of the, the bathroom. Um, it's specifically only for the replacement of the floors or reinforcement on the floors. So we have to use treated um, plywood on top of it, reinforcement. Um, however, since Cortec was here, just to give you an update, um. Cortec was here doing the construction for their. I asked them to look at it because, um, modular one, two and three. Um, just to assess, reassess what we can do so that it's ready for this coming on this end. And, um, the emergency only is basically, um. It's not really the floors, it's just to replace or remove the carpets, which something is very minimal. So, um, that we will look into just, um. To, to do that, but not touch the floors. I just wanted to make sure that it's safe.
There's a modular home that has very weak flooring. If you're ready to sink, if you ever, if I get any, any fatter than now, I can go down in the bottom of the thing.
Have they reinforced that? No, we looked at it yesterday. So the only reason why it's like wiggly is because underneath. Um, underneath is um, a tin, like a tin roof and there's foam insulation in between. And then you know how it's on top of like choice only, it's not solid. But, um, if you remove the carpet and just, um, put like another plywood.
Okay, okay. Just to make sure.
Yeah, so we only prioritize those three that is really wiggly, um, to get it ready for the.
So when you step on it, it will be solid.
I know, cause you don't want someone fault, you know?
That, that part of that is your nursing office.
Yeah.
Cause the nursing office, when I go there, it's, you could tell the.
And it's very minimal and then we, we already asked this, but then because it's just repairs and then it's not really. Then we don't have to go through the. But the, we will still put that in again, but, um, after, maybe later on.
That could be.
For, for, for the whole, all the floors.
Make sure we're meeting deadline, right? Cause we don't wanna lose the money.
Yes, we want.
Carry on, thank you.
So, um, building CDE repairs and partitions, I have mentioned that the, um, construction is going on. Um, they will, um, they said, they will not try, they will finish it before Monday for the. Um, by, the next one is we will finish the admin office and the LRC partitions for the admin. Uh, principal's office before we start because that's where all the employees will sign in and sign out.
Are you using the random POS for the sign in, sign out?
No, not yet because, um, we're, we're starting, but we have to coordinate with, um, the provider. Um.
We, we need to get that because that, that is very easy. Uh, even. They just sign in and then you can monitor who's in the classroom, he has been, you know, then they have to go. He can actually do ocular, right? But, but that one is very efficient because all they have to do is put their. Put their tongue or something, I don't know.
Yeah, it's just a, it's just a.
Their tongue and they're, they're in.
So we have the airport.
Uh, yeah, is that what you have there?
Yeah, I mean that, yeah.
Yeah, nice. Okay, next, which, which are they?
Um, building CDE, GFD inspection, this is something that we have to take over, I have, we have to take over. Um, um, but a, a step forward is Mister Magnus when he gave the initial report. It's just his initial report. I compiled that and along with the. GFD requirements and also the past ones that was that, right? Um, during Dr. Wang's time, I have that and I submitted to someone who is a, uh. No, it just so happened a friend who. Who does some fire inspection specifically on base. So just to give us an idea. What's the next steps? So that someone who, someone who really has knowledge. So he said he's gonna look into it. I'm on the process of giving the plans and getting the plans of. Corting because this is their building to submit to him. And then he's gonna write up all his recommendations and make sure that. This is what you just give to our department and then that's what they have to follow. So that's the, the step that I can report to you. Um, more to come. On that. Yeah, it, it. And then a predication and dummy group during the summer, we set it up for Thursdays. We had Zoom. And, um, face to face for the teachers who are here. Um, we had to put a hold on that just to give the summer teachers also the. We have actually one week before that's. Um, the new schedule that we will give you is basically what's the schedule of our dummy meetings. Every day, which is most likely to be in the afternoon after this miss of two o'clock. And I will update you on the, um, what specific days of that the board and everyone else can also join you during the. Uh, but we're moving forward, uh, Mister, uh, Ha, uh, Mister Charvalov and Misses, um. Lu has been coming in every week even before our dummy meetings. Uh, before they left to, to make sure that they, we are on track. And we, we were, we were. We took step back, but we're back on track. Um, so we're back on track.
I, you know, I missed, uh, this week's meeting. But Mister Charvalov and I were discussing about, uh, the concern of the domain leaders about. How, how do they track? How do they track what they're supposed to do and are they meeting? The goals that they have, and I saw, I hope that went, went well. I, I just, just couldn't make it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um.
So you had a meeting, right?
Yes, with the, with the last one, the last one that you were.
No, that this week.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Actually, we kind of shifted to something else because, um, we wanted to make sure that. The pre-service training that we're gonna have this week is somehow related to. The topic, so we didn't really, um, touch that, yeah, go into that one. New business, um, employee evaluations, school year twenty-one, twenty-two. We received them from Mister Magnus and, uh, Ms. uh, Ms. HA, just pending a few positions, but definitely. Um, um, I think when one teacher will be back, they will get the reports, but at least it's, it's here. Um, we have to go back through it just to compare and make sure that what we. Cause we improved the PTAP part for the teachers. So we will have to sit together with administration and just to revisit if the PTAP that was adopted. In school year twenty-twenty is really addressing. Uh, the recommendations given by the, the collegiate team. Um, just to make sure that the PTAP was revised or refined to make sure that. We are helping our professional staff to grow and be better teachers.
I like that form really. If, if, if that gets completed, it tells you so much about the, uh, the employee. And the, the evaluator because it's a complete form. Including the evidence, I like, you know, how, how did you actually extract all those, you know, those. Those evaluation, you know, bad on certain aspect of the PTAP form. It's a really a nice form.
But it has to be followed.
Yeah, absolutely followed.
It has to be completed, both by, by administrator and.
The, the, uh, the, uh, the, yeah, the personnel. I like that. Hey.
Um, I think SOBs and review proposed faculty sick and personal leave adjustments. Um, I just wanna, um, ask the board because we did a work session during that time and we mentioned about. The proposal, I have my notes here.
I remember that we did talk, but I feel like I never got the final copy of what. We agreed.
Yes, there was no agreement yet, but I just reported the numbers because they wanted to make sure that. Is it gonna, is it gonna affect the budget? And then I remember saying. Yes, there is some money involved in it, but it's not actually going out because it's their leave.
So now this is all, this is better spelled out now on the policy.
Yes, so just to. Um, the original in the policy is, um. Two point, what is it again? Two point, two point, um. Two point seventy, not seventy-five days benefit times eight hours, which is twenty-two hours. And again, the decimal point is. So the recommendation is three hours of sick leave every pay period, which is a total of sixty-six hours.
For the whole year?
For the whole year. Uh, it's just two hours more of sick leave. And.
So sixty-six hours divided by.
Eight.
By eight. What does that spell out by days?
It's eight hour, eight days and two hours extra.
So it's only eight.
Yeah. Eight days and two hours.
It's a little too.
Let's see, some of them.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but you see, they'll say like, they don't use it. Sometimes they wanna use it, so they will be off from, from work.
No, but that's when I carry over, see.
Can we just, um, um, vote on it because we wanted to try to recall, did they vote on it?
No, we never voted on it. We never saw that. We already agree because we waited on this since last.
Yeah. But again, rolled over for, for a hundred twenty-two hours cap. That was my recommendation, just so to, to be consistent. With the, the twelve one employees, which is a hundred.
How Pastor Rosie put that motion on the floor?
And one more, just to include.
I really want to see, I don't wanna, I'm not gonna vote on it until I see what, what it looks like, the final.
Oh, yeah.
This is proposed.
So it's, um, um, the original is eight days in the policy and it's not rolled over.
Sorry. Hi, you know, I'm talking about the policy.
Oh, it's okay. So, but because, it's not, um, that's my question though. So these are just the numbers that we recommend.
And we have the money right.
My question is basically, if you approve of it, that it will be, um. It's, it, it's gonna be in the employee handbook only. So how do you want us to proceed with the? The changes when you, which, when you. We'll just have to add it in as an addendum, not addendum, it's gonna be a change. So usually before any change. Yeah, um, as I was observing the employee handbook and how it became thicker and thicker and thicker. Is when there's a changes, it's like an amendment that was included.
So my question is, you know, while they build up, right, or they, they do a carryover from, from, from this school year to this school year, right? Um, how does that impact their retirement? Because they have social security, not. It has nothing to do with the social security that we have. It has nothing.
Yeah, it's just their sick leave.
It's only a benefit of, of, uh, of, uh.
The employee, and again, yeah, because in DOE, their sick leave is like. They even pay it back if you don't, I think when you get.
No, 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 that's annually.
Oh, yes, but I mean for their sick leave, it continues to. There's no, there's no path, but at the end, they can use that for their retirement.
Ninety-six hours. Right, for every ninety, for every ninety-six hour, it translates to one year.
Yes.
That's the benefit.
I really am pleading or really pleading as a teacher, a former teacher too, and we re- we reviewed the numbers.
This year, we saw why we didn't choose the retirement, I mean, the benefits are.
I don't think because we're not public school, but you know.
Yes, we are, because we've seen.
We're, we're receiving money, but we're not out there. Yeah, we don't have retirement.
Government doesn't have social security that we have.
No, but did, was there an attempt to go with the government of one retirement?
Oh, it can't be, because see, you have, you have our, you have, DOE has its own.
We don't have our own.
So it's like we're a private company, we get, our retirement is, is, um, IRS. Like the SSS and Medicare.
Believe me, it's very bad, oh my gosh, I don't know what I'll do without.
Medicare, yeah, SSS and Medicare.
I worked for so many years as the nation's.
Oh, so you were able to. You made it to Medicare, right?
Yes.
So Miss Lu, Madam Te and trustee, um, so sixty six hours, it's just two hours more. Than what we had before, um, but if we can roll over up to one twenty.
Four hundred.
Not really cap, but after one hundred twenty al- hours. Um, every year we will have to review so that we can monitor who's like taking advantage. Or is it really to the benefit of it?
But a hundred and twenty hour stays with them as long as they don't use it.
Um, and then it will be carried over through and through until they have the hundred twenty hours, the reason why. Um, originally, I, I'm for like a week forever, until you're here. But I said we have to review at a certain point, just to be consistent and aligned with the twelve month employee. I really recommend that the teachers be given that, um, opportunity to. Through their sick leave, because there are teachers, eighty percent, eighty percent of the teachers, they don't go, they don't get sick. So they lose that eight out, eight days. Not getting paid because they were sick and then the ones who are afraid to lose it will pretend to be sick. And then before it, 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 um, they, before they lose it, which is September and October. Those are the times that we need our teachers.
And that's why we wanna cap, pick it, carry over and carry over, so.
That, and then for the personal leave, originally we have two days only in the old. Um, employee handbook, which is sixteen hours, um, per benefit period for the whole year. Um, my recommendation is to make it even again instead of one point something, something, which is so hard to compute. Point, point zero three six, I believe, I personally, this point twenty seven. It's hard for the, the accountant and the payroll to do it, it's, um, just one hour of personal leave. They earn every pay period, which at the end is a total of twenty two hours. So it's, um, twenty two minus sixteen, which is the old one, is six hours, six hours more of personal. But that's only one hour per pay period, uh, one hour per pay period instead of point something.
So by the end of this school year, they'll have like twenty four hours?
Twenty two hours only, of personal leave.
And so what, what is the plan if they don't use?
Um, originally, personal leave is, uh, being rolled over. And even in the old policy, still, in the old, uh, employee handbook. And because you know how you have parents, you still have, um, you still have, when you're sick, personal leave, I have to bring my child. It's not just me.
What is the, what impact would it have on the budget? If they choose not to use it, but get cash in return?
We have not used that, right now, it's more of like the actual needs of the teachers compared to other.
Not the personal leave? Yeah, we don't have the money for that, but we have the budget that we have.
Have you, have you discussed the possibility of like transferring? On your, uh, personal leave to, to sick?
Actually, that was, that was, um, recommended during Dr. Montal's time, so we'll go into that, it's just that. We wanted to address one thing at a time to accommodate and be more compassionate.
That's what we've been doing anyway, uh, uh, in the past because, uh, there was no carryover. So there was no sick leave, so we kind of, we became compassionate to the, to the teachers and the staff. That they can, you know, interchange.
Oh, yeah.
No, no, not only sharing, it's the personal leave and the sick leave together. Because there was, it's just for them to get, uh.
Pursue it if they're sick.
Yes.
Yes, because they wanted to go to doctor.
Want them to use sick leave for, for traveling or going.
But just as a reminder, during the pandemic, we became very reliant for those two years. Because they ran out of sick leave already because they were gonna get sick. So we kind of were not asking for, for medical, um, doctor certificate. Because sick leave, our policy, if you're sick more, for more than.
Three days.
But we didn't do that, because we know that you're not sick, but your child is sick or had Covid.
No, and that's okay for sick leave.
But do we wanna go back to the regular now, now that we adjusted that sick leave will be rolled over? Um. Sick and personal, one hour of personal leave is one hour per pay period. Yes, and three hours of sick leave for a period will be rolled, both and be rolled over. Um, and then we're going back to the policy that we don't interchange anymore, sick, one hour. Okay.
Okay, so I would like to go ahead then, the motion that we will go ahead and. This is good news, a lot of our teachers, three hours per pay period for sick leave. And one hour of our personal leave and roll over. And roll over, yes.
Need a second, trustee Lu? Second? Motion by trustee Rosie, seconded by trustee, uh, uh, Lu. Um, any discussion, trustee Havel?
Are you okay?
Yeah, she's okay.
Thank you, teachers, teachers will be very happy.
I.
I. Effective immediately, yeah, right? And we'll change the policy. This is full year.
Looks like Baden is happy. Baden, are you happy?
Yes, trustee Havel, you were saying something?
Yeah, I was asking Baden if she has a smiling face when we approved that.
Very big smile.
Thank you, trustee Lu, thank you, trustee. Okay, let's go, move on.
Um.
What business?
Staffing pattern. Staffing pattern, so we had, um, um, tried to compare after the. After the activity of the news, the compensation, um. Schedule, yes, so what Miss Badet was able to give me, thank you so much because she's. Let's do this, so the current salary is, oh, yes, but the current salary, uh.
Bring it because of the salaries.
Yeah.
I can, you want me to make up?
Yes, let me first look at it.
Yes.
We're not gonna, you should all. Yes, for the trustees, uh, eyes only.
The fastest way we could do is just actually.
Absolutely, I really like this.
I'm giving it away.
I, you know what, I like it because of the size, it's just right, you know? I, I carry the big one, it's too heavy, my, so I have a big one in my car and this one just.
Because when you go to conferences, they have so many things that they give out.
I know, they don't like to take you back.
I know.
It's like a door price for the opening of the.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's something good, you know?
Yeah.
I know, and guess was the T-shirt, that's the one from.
They, I, those are ones that they were giving away.
Oh, see?
So I think we have one that's like that.
Yes, this is the one, this is the one that she gave us.
Yeah, because all the trustees have that.
Yeah.
I have one.
So we still have to give, um, trustee Lu yet, um, it's still good.
Yeah, see, it's very nice, right?
Yeah, and the material is very good.
Yeah, education squad.
Yeah, good, yeah?
Yeah.
Hey, CEO, where is my T-shirt? How much, how much for it?
During the special meeting.
You were on Zoom.
Right.
And then you missed the lunch too, sir. You missed out on the lunch today again.
No, I'm just giving away, but you know, my, my daughter.
Did you see our supplies?
My daughter goes, ah, throw that away, you cannot even hold hot or cold. I mean, it could hold cold or not hot, but hot, for my heart. I have a lot, even have my dishes from there, I have a lot at home.
I think the same material, but I love this because it, it really is.
Did you get that for free? Or you bought there? This one, this one is very insulated, this is cheap, this is really give away.
But, but like you said, it's good for once, and the water.
I took this on the plane, this is what I had on the plane, because I have a big one.
Big, right?
Yeah, so I.
Oh, yeah, you have.
I, I, I keep this on my backpack.
Oh.
And I just carry it, I refill it on the airport. Hey, remind me, ACTE, uh, don't be late for registration.
Um, Frankie. And he's gonna be the curriculum coordinator.
Oh, man, oh my god, he would, he would love, oh, he would go crazy. Oh, he would go crazy, even my son-in-law, right, he's the executive director of the school, because we're traveling together. I guess, mom, when am I getting there? I said, Frankie, just get yourself ready, he says, also Frankie. Oh, Frankie, the Frankie will get a lot better, my son-in-law will go to the ACT conference, so we should go.
I know, right, it's just, maybe next time we'll see.
She can go, I, I don't know who else can go, because I am paid by my school. My school will pay for me and my son-in-law, so even our compensation, so I say. That budget to go to you guys, especially yours, because what you can see there is how the ACT.
It's, it's really, conferences is really very educational.
ACTE is all about career and technical education, the pathways. I'm completing the pathways now for high schools today, but I guess, they did not stop on just the NA summer. They went back to the actual pathway, so instead of starting like, um, biology, whatever this, those, all those terminology. We went into the actual NA program right away, now they're going backward and, and getting all those, those others start up. But the, the initial classes, the main things are.
That's really good to help them for their future career.
They're really working, but first Concord, Last Sunday, are already working for the, for the CSTC.
See that?
Then when they go off island, we can have their licensed NA, which is now there's, there's, there's the, what they call the wrist proxy. So they can be in LA and be an NA in LA, making it like a boulevard.
I know, really, right, it's, it's really for their future benefit.
You know, that's why I told you, Doctor Taylor in the cinema has really a forward ambition. Very, very active, very active, she's really forward, very technical. Okay?
Okay, let's go. So basically, we just have to look at the current salary, which is the current total salary per employee. Based on the old compensation schedule. And then the current now, their old blue, you would notice, the blue one, meaning this is following. Adopting the new compensation schedule.
So their new position?
They're not new positions, but they are the increments, basically based on the new.
So the blue ones are the ones that.
From the newly adopted, uh, yes, benefits, uh. For example, um, one, um, one, let's say, um, the first one, number nine, number nine. It's thirty three, one, fifty one, that's the, from the old schedule.
Okay.
The one beside is blue, thirty six, four seventy four, that's the increment of that particular position or teacher.
Teacher, yeah.
So adding all the current salary at the back. That's a total of two million seven hundred seventy thousand nine hundred nine per year. And then for the blue is two point nine, which is two nine thirty oh forty three. If you would look at the, uh, the bottom, there's a two hundred ninety eight thousand three twenty in red. I just asked Miss Badet to remove the vacant positions because we never had that even before.
Oh, this included the vacant position?
The, the two point seven and the two point nine includes the vacant position. Uh, we filled already everything, but the red ones, we don't really need, tho- those are just like. Vacant positions that we never filled before.
We don't really need it.
But, but you wanna keep the money, right?
Yes, yes.
So you do not take that.
From the budget.
Open, but you have to be, you can't be budget for that.
Yes, the only reason why we wanted to subtract and for you to see is because we wanna compare how much was the raise. From the old, which is two point four at the bottom, two point four to two point six. It's a hundred fifty seven thousand.
Okay.
Which means that it's only six percent increment or the change in the, from the old one. But again, we had requested or we, she allocate, we expected sixteen percent, right? So we still have ten percent to.
To play around with.
To, to play around with, which is leading me to asking of you, when we get the chance, when we're done with the support staff. You know how the DOE gave out like five thousand just for. I'm going to look into that.
It's a one time.
One time, yes, so I already asked Miss Badet, Miss Badet, after, after our increment. Since it's only six percent, we have ten percent to grow and work closely in the fiscal year, this is something.
A one time.
Motion approved.
And how much are we gonna?
Um, but the quality or the criteria for that one time is of course based on. Um, the years of service, so, because it's not gonna be. Um. Can you give us, can, can you give me some time because I, I have to.
So I have a, I have a question that I'm really concerned at this time.
Yes.
Number five is Jamie in the legislature.
Yes.
As a coordinator, that's her salary?
Yes, because she's still a teacher.
But then we had her on number eighty nine, another salary?
Um, eighty nine, no, so that, oh, eighty nine?
Yeah, right there.
That's a, that's an HR. That's a same name, but different life name.
Oh, there's two of them, David.
Jamie, the lady show is the DI.
No, me too, thank you. In the legislature, in the legislature is our DI.
Are you laughing?
Thank you so much, hey, give her more coffee, I think she needs more coffee.
I showed her, I showed her. I think it's called toothpick, you know what, for the open. Besides speaking to.
Okay, we have to be country and.
So we would have.
But it's good because, right?
We're good, right, okay, motion approved.
Oh.
Okay.
We'll present to you though, the numbers.
This is the, the only thing, the, the, we're approving the budget, we're approving the budget. The personnel in, involved is about how many, nine?
No, not Lily, everyone, but we'll, we'll have the criteria first, I'm, I'm trying to explain to you that.
This new salary schedule is dependent on action by the legislator to approve our fiscal year twenty seven.
No, this is already incorporated in, even in our sixty two. Let's hope.
Anyway, what I want, what I, I think the board would like to see is, okay, approve the money and then submit all the. Submit all the names of, of those people that will be, uh, that qualify for this. And we just need to approve the budget because this, this budget needs to be earmarked, it has to be earmarked now.
Yes.
Only because of the end of twenty two, twenty three of this year, so that's earmarked. Only because of the end of twenty-two, twenty-three of this year. So let's earmark this now. For the difference on the sixteen, on the six percent.
Hundred and ten percent.
On the ten, the difference of the ten percent that will be given to, uh, to Ivan's staff or support staff, right?
No, no, it's for everyone, because this is. There's a ten percent, what is the ten percent of their salary? No, 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 the extra ten percent.
Going to gauge is.
So whatever we have, the ten percent is what you're gonna be divided.
Amongst the qualified one. The year of service.
We'll try, we'll try.
But for now, approve this.
Yes, that's my, yeah.
Only to approve the budget, but the names will follow, the names will follow.
And the criteria of doing that. It's the same as here. It's just a recommendation, but the, the actual numbers and criteria will be presented to you.
We're also nine oh four?
Yeah, we're talking about the nine oh four. If, if this is the.
We also made it a condition, right? That their evaluation must be. They must be satisfactory.
Yeah, of course, that has to be. And it's in the board resolution. Yeah. Okay, I still hope that we approved the new case salary.
The budget for addition to complete actually the six percent, uh, uh, earmark for, for the, uh, new classified, new salary schedule. Sorry, that's nine hundred four thousand seven hundred eight dollars and seventy, seventy cents. Do I need a moment? Do I hear a second? One, one more question on the fiscal year twenty-one prior year obligation pending release since. We still have, uh.
Yeah, we still have.
Yeah, that's something separate.
That's from prior.
I, I, I understand, I just wanted to.
No, no, because, uh, trust, the, the, Banji, I mean, the, our, our council. Chairwoman can, Banji is, is spearheading that. I have a couple of follow-up just last week, just to see where we are, because I told her. That continues to show in our audit, right? We have good clean audit, but that, that's an open item. We cannot have that as an open item consistently. Eventually, they might just suck it out. But we haven't gotten any, uh, feedback. Uh, when called the O A, they said it's gotta be, uh, council chairwoman Banji that needs to request that.
Why, why isn't she requesting this?
No, because, because the law, the law, all our, our, our allotment goes to them and then it gets submitted to the O A. So that obviously has a move from.
Her to.
To the O A. So we wanted to find out what is the holdback, what is the holdback, right?
Did she talk to you about?
No, I told her, she, she.
Never mind our full band six, this is my niece.
Because now we have to believe. So the problem is that money is available. But we can have continues to show that in our. No, we can have continues to show that in our audit as an open item. We have good audit, we have.
How, how Banji to just request D O A?
You read my letter, right? Like, already, you read my letter to Banji, uh, last week, right? Asking her, I asking her, where, where, where is it now? I said, we really need to get that out of our audit, yeah. Because it's, it's showing the past three years.
Until she does that, it's gonna continue to show.
But I tried to call her, because she's been sending also, uh, follow-up email.
Lou, second, your second, eh, the motion, right, Lou?
I, I did, I did the call and she's, maybe there's, maybe she's serious. Or Trina, Trina.
Time doing things.
Trina, Trina, Trina already approved that. Trina was the one at one time holding that, because we, they, we have complained from either vendor, right? But we cannot, we cannot hold that back, because we really need to get the money out.
I know, okay, I'll call, I'll call Banji.
Well, that would be great.
So we can, gosh, I, I don't know what is.
You have my letter, you have her, all her follow-up email that ask, you know, because when we called the O A, they said, Miss Banji have to open.
All she has to do is we approve the letter, send it over.
No, yeah, but.
Your request.
Okay, anyway, anyway, can, can we get a motion? Motion on the floor for nine hundred four thousand seven oh eight point seven need to complete the earmark six percent on this, the, the new salary schedule. Uh, I need a second, second, okay, um, motion on the floor by trustee, uh, uh, I mean, I don't know, seconded by justice in class. Uh, any discussion, trustee Abla?
No.
No? Okay. Both? Aye, 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 thank you. Okay.
All business, F Y twenty-three budget four, that's you now.
He's still everything, uh, that the council has updated, but then this week just updates, yeah.
So we haven't received an approval, but yes, that's what, that's what the people are talking about. So, uh, the, the talk is we're gonna have it at fifteen, at seven five hundred. Hopefully that really holds true. Hopefully they, 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 they. It's actually a, uh, a uniform or actually a, a request in unison by all charter schools. Everything is going high. Everything is, is getting more expensive.
Very nice.
So we just need a little bit of patience to see when, but June, July is usually when our budget are, are actually approved. They will have a big budget meeting and then that is when they approve all the government entities charter school event. Uh, this is how I was getting the problem last time, because I assured that we already had the X amount of money in our. And then by the time the, the, the budget was released by the legislature, it was below five hundred dollars or something.
Yeah.
So we, and we already had, we already had.
Try to cover some.
No, we didn't have to cover, we actually. And we added more kids in our, because we thought, one, will be approved, will be approved for X amount of work, two will be approved for X amount of budget. But that did not matter. So lesson learned, guys.
I know, that happened again.
Yeah, and it became, I learned my lesson, but I get, I have to get to see. I get to be in the newspaper all the time, why I have so much money owed, because I tell them about what happened. And then even.
Spent it before it was approved.
Yeah, even with the, the kindergarten, they said that was never approved, no, we haven't approved. So they fought us against G D O E, but it was only G D O E that went against us. But hopefully in the next two year, the twenty-one, we have our capital, we can actually have our, our kindergarten classes. Because we, we are approved as K to twelve.
Three Ks, yeah.
Three K, right, and three K to twelve. So you, and then daycare, hopefully, the daycare is, is gonna be under the five oh one lease.
Yes, yes.
So that's gonna be a non-profit organization daycare. We just need to go. Could we have a facility now for daycare in the school?
That would be nice.
For that rest of the school, for that, for DAX this year, you can give me a, a space where you can actually have a daycare? Where's looking?
We have tents.
Three hundred. No, 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 you, you gotta put them in a solid facility, right? And then also the age group, the age group that you need to take care of, maybe, uh, I was told infants are the best, because they don't require playground, da, 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 right? Yeah, I have five years of daycare experience. I run one on my own, but I'm telling you, the money, ninety-eight million, but it has not been used. For any day.
So we can apply for that, right?
I want her to apply for that, because if we can identify a facility here, we have the playground, we have the classroom, we have the teachers. Put altogether the cost of, we'd apply for a daycare.
Yeah, really?
Yeah, because I, I have a five oh one C.
Five oh one C, okay.
So but with your end, you have the space for me, okay?
Yes, yes.
At least, at least fifty to, fifty students, right? And you would like it, let's exchange it for us. That's on the non-profit side of our operation.
Let's see. And, and, and people would really appreciate that, that they have some money worth to put their kids.
Teachers are already tapping on that. They're getting like, uh, some, one teacher told me that she has.
Some families probably.
Six hundred seventy-five dollars a month, paid directly to the daycare by this administration. So the, our teachers are happy, because instead of that, forking it out of the own pocket, they would say, they said that it was really.
So do we have a vote? Oh, we did, right? I just don't wanna miss it. But we're on the one oh four, which you, did we? And then R S P, that's you.
The, the R P for appointment to audit, so I, I already, uh, uh, okay, already finalized it. I also sent it to the legal council for one last week. And because you, uh, anything that you do has, the legal council has to take a look at the, at the language, the language of everything, right? So, as soon as the legal council, this is okay, then, but we need to advertise it next week, because obviously it's the heart of the, uh, the proposal. So by very safe, it should be in the, uh, the legislature. And, and, uh, I need to say that the legal council reviewing it. Reviewing it, yeah. So, uh, for the, it's, uh, R P for, uh, audit is always, always comes from the O P A. Because, yeah, and the, the, the language, they are the ones to give us the, uh, the, the packet. So, uh, on the R P, there will be one representative only from DAX, three from O P A and one from, uh, uh, independent, uh, audit, uh, C P A. Two, two, uh, two, uh, to evaluate, they will be the ones to evaluate, uh. So hopefully, uh, Mr. Erdisa, that time will be, uh, will allow to, want to be part of the, of the. Naval readers. So this one, the, uh, the I F B for food vendor, which is what we say that you will slip. Uh, I finished it, the, the whole, that night.
And you already sent it to legal council for review?
Yes, yes. Right, yeah. So, yeah, and I sent it to both Anne and the legal council, I copy it, what I say, it's a hundred one page. The R P for the, uh, for the O P A is ninety-three pages. The I F B for the food vendor is, uh, hundred one pages. So, um, it, it's mirror to G D O E, if we got the template from G D O E, mirror did it changed.
So you're talking about three vendors, three price, three.
Yeah, so what Anne was, yeah, what Anne was explaining is, um, and, and even, uh, the one from the federal, uh, C, uh, I agree, suggested that we do the multi-step, meaning to say, not, um, we need to say that, uh, we do two phases of the I F B. The first phase is to see the qualification, the technical qualification of the vendors. And then, so we, uh, give away, uh, let's say, four or among the three, we, uh, we like. Then that's when we open the, the second phase, which is the, the price. And the I F is always the lowest rate. So, but before we do the lowest rate, we have to review first the, uh, the, uh, ethical, uh, technical, uh, qualifications. Of the, uh, of the vendors. So.
This was recommended by, um, uh, Shannon, Shannon Wardley, simply because he doesn't want us to end up with the lowest bidder, but. No service, no quality, yeah. They already ended up with, according to him.
As long as you, as long as it can be justified. It's just like, like getting a price quotation of a table. Okay, but if, if, if vendor one does not need the specifications of the need, let's say a classroom. And then it's a different kind of table, you don't have to go with the lowest, as long as you can justify this.
Legal council is currently reviewing it and, uh, and, uh, and I told her that it's, uh, urgent, that, you know, she finished it, because it's already August. Already, as the same as the other.
By August one?
By next, at least second of August, it should be okay.
I'm also currently reviewing it, because I have to remember that the qualifications for C and P is there. Because we don't want to remove that, so that when it comes that we need, we can apply, because our application is still there. We don't want our application to be hindered, just because we did not need the standards. So whether we apply for C and P or not, it's ready.
And this guy is already well explained. They, they all went explained, so we just.
And we don't really need to have a full kitchen, so we, we, we don't. It's an outside vendor, they're the ones serving, so.
So that's an idea there, the funding will come from there. And it's, the, 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 the vendor that we choose after the I F B, you know, will be not the same vendor as G D O E. Because I don't know why we cannot, G D O E cannot get out of, uh.
It's a five year.
It's a five year, five, they did an I F G without the. They are not, not, a lot of it goes to the waste.
But, uh, uh, G D O E just did the I F B and they did a most ice test, because they already learned their lesson.
These guys, this company is state side, so, but, but the side part is they could be big, but if the, the food that's been served. Um, yeah. Try with all the essential nutritional, you know, name, right? Be nice. They can change it a little bit and make it. Were to kind of like find out from the kids, still. We're still within the nutritional guidelines. You know, ask the kids, so that, that they're, they're part of the. We did that, we did that before we did the selection from this last vendor. We actually have students come down there and tasted everybody, the best, honestly, the vendors that were competing. We asked them to put together the food and then they left and then we took their assessment and said, this vendor, we like the food.
Yeah, but.
So the other one was seen out.
But it just was the use of having that and the kids are not eating it.
We did that, because I said, okay, you just, you have new vendor, so blah, 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 so they eat it, oh, really like it. Because you know, before, we used to have a student association. And I don't know what happened. The president of the student association was the one and the vice person was the one that tasted the food. Do we have our, uh, student officers elected already for what we're going to do?
No, we're gonna do it this time. During the pandemic, there were no interactions, so we didn't even have officers for each man.
Or kind of a stock for one, now that we're back.
Yeah, it's face to face too, so we should have.
Yeah, it's, where are we now? That's, um, Ms. Badet?
So, yeah, the R P and the I F B is on more to count. And then the F Y, let me do budget, I already gave it to you. Because you are. And the last one will be the, uh, U S D A, this is in August.
May I interview these before, before U S D A? Something came up, um, which is somehow related to I F B's proposal. And the new projects that we can get involved in. So last week, we had the C S P, when we had the special meeting, it's only funded for, it's only available for all charter schools. It's called the Charter School Program. So, Ms. Helen, tomorrow conference?
That's where the guys that did the, the, the concert, mostly a lot of the thing with the conference, the C S P group.
Yes, so.
And C S P stands for?
Charter School Program. So, um, it's like the A R P, S F. But only open for all charter schools. So I attended the meeting spearheaded by Ms. Helen, that we could look into it. We, we need a, a state agency, who is again D O E. So Ms. Anna again from the O E is in collaboration with us. So the only four charter schools who will be participating, um, in that program, the deadline is August eighth. It could be the four of us, no, it's August eighth to submit to them.
You guys, our, our staff has changed your date, you are the, the deadline committee. You're always meeting deadlines.
That is a good.
It's okay, I need to stretch my back.
So, um, we have a very big chance participate, because it's only open to the U S and then the U S from all the states. Most of them, they showed us on our Zoom meeting, that most of them already are in it. Also, here in, um, it's the last and there's only four charter schools here, but the requirement is you have to have a state agency with G D O E. So thank you again to Ms. Anna again and her participation. We asked Ms. Badet to join them and we had a special meeting. So I just wanna give you an idea where we're at. We, I just also came out from the nine o'clock Zoom meeting with all, all the other charter schools. So we're going to submit our own five-year plan.
Yes.
We all agree that is four facility.
Yes.
Um, the grants we're applying for is for facility, like for the lease, for the, um, I was thinking this will be our step. Uh, Plan B.
The generators, my god.
Um, because we also have to renew the M O A, right, for the school. So there's one point eight million allotted for, for the four schools, depending on your. Depending, depending on your number of students. So per student is eight seventy-one sixty-five, should be qualified. And we're all again going through the same.
Is that how many we have? Eight seventy-one?
No, eight seventy-one sixty-five dollars out of one point eight million. Because of the number of students. Times seven sixty-five is six hundred sixty-six thousand eight hundred to GAX.
Okay, so when you talked about, you all decided on the facilities, does that mean? Okay, so when you talked about, you all decided on the facility, does that mean the current facility or the future facility?
It doesn't matter. So how much do we pay for our facility? Basically here, how much, we're all about to pay the rent, because we have to renew, we have to pay our lease, right, so that we can reduce the campus. Um, there's requirement or there's restrictions, you cannot use for construction, you cannot use for salary. You can use more programs, but we're thinking we are already qualified for under the consolidated grant, so why use that? So just for facility, because, um, I Lern has to pay their lease, right?
Yeah, they do.
They have to do, especially with now, they're gonna pay more because of their new campus. And I was thinking for us, what if we can renew, well, our M O A, we still have to stay here. At least we have reserve funds just for that, to pay the fees. Um, it's just, um, extra solar panels or whatever.
It's like all angles that we said that.
We need to really have solar panels, because the guys that I spoke to said that those panels can be transferred to any building that we will be, we will be permanently. These, these will be considerable among the seven, because ten thousand on the average, that's when power wasn't still too high, Mohammed are paying that well.
Yes, expensive now.
So by, by using that money for the lease of that, does that mean you will get ex- extra money for other categories?
Something else, yeah, with, on other allocation, you're allocated for something else. And then we are not going to worry about the new building, because that's something set for that while we're still on a facility that you're renting. Um, if we can't move right away.
That's right.
We might end up paying two different, the one for the construction and the one that we're currently using, so at least we have reserve. Um, it's always just have to have a good, um, plan. So our deadline to submit per school, the five-year projected plan and narrative, I'm already getting across, I, because I just came from the report for yes, one. Yes, of two, first, second, third, fourth quarter.
Yeah, why, why C S P is heavily funded by, by U C.
Yes.
By this, by the national government. So, the fact that we are still a territory, uh, does not extrude us from those monies. So that's why it's, the conference really had exposed us to a lot of, of the good stuff and opportunities that we found along the way.
Yeah, we were not available.
That's why I always need the national conference.
Oh, yes, really good.
And only the networking you get, but only information like this that will never reach us, right? So I'm sure a lot of the charters now are happy that, you know.
Yeah, and you missed it, Madam Faye, so it's one point eight million to be distributed to all the four charter schools, depending on the, um, the student. So eight hundred seventy-one dollars per student.
We get the lion's share for that, because we have.
We have six hundred sixty-six thousand.
Our stimulation, yeah. Our A D A, our average daily, daily involvement, our, our average daily attendance, which is a mandated information from the public law, uh, give us exactly why it's market seven forty or seven sixty. So we have load chart, yeah, we have the load chart, I mean, the, the lion's share of, of the money that come out of the C S P.
Yes.
And then.
So, let's all pray, and then I finish, then we leave them, we're gonna be paid. I have to finish it, I have submitted to Ms. Anna.
So are we required for the solar panels now?
Hmm, not yet, because we're trying to put that in here.
Yeah.
To, to that.
But that's why you should have.
Because the solar panel company, in addition to that, came, uh, a month ago.
Who are these people?
Uh, it was sent by Coretech. I think this company is, um, is look, is as, uh, kind of in collaboration with Coretech on all their buildings.
Yeah.
So it's not our building, but, uh, she should even around, but it will benefit us for the, for the power. And it will benefit, I think, Coretech for the, for the rebate or the energy, uh, program.
But are we paying for the panels?
No, because it's a Coretech property.
Of course.
It's a Coretech building, so, uh, we can, yeah.
You should get that, uh, Coretech should get that, it should have gotten that in all the different money that are coming.
I think because Coretech is also proactive in all this, uh, the new.
Yeah, thank you, Coretech, it's okay. There's also something on my, on my table that, you know, that we will be happy.
Yeah, so we've submitted to Anna, again being the state, and then she's gonna put altogether every school's request and submit it to.
Just make sure we're in the timeline or deadline, so we don't pass.
Yeah.
What, just around the corner?
Yeah, I have to submit it.
Are you sure you have line when that money used to be you?
No, we just submitted tomorrow, and it's, they have, um, G D O E, or Anna has to submit it to the, this charter school, um, on August eighth. Um, we'll wait, but at least we're there, it's there.
The state agency that, that actually, the major recipient of all U S D A money. So without the state agency, they will not, we're not gonna have all those banks coming out.
It's a requirement.
It's a requirement.
It's really great, we're getting a lot of federal money to help us.
Yeah, that's why I said, hey, man.
Yeah, really?
You have no solution? You have no right to be there.
That's it. Okay, so U S D A is.
Yeah.
Yes, the next one. And.
The state's.
Where I'm sure it can.
Regarding our money, to discuss.
Yes, please, because she's not answering my phone call. But I sent her an email and a note.
And I saw the letter.
And she has a lot of follow-up email already, the hundred and four. We need to get that, take it out.
I don't know what is taking her so long.
She doesn't have a secretary right now?
It's not the secretary. Okay, it's okay, yeah.
Yeah.
It's okay.
Okay, U S D A visit in August, right, Madam Faye? So you prepare August twelfth, two P M.
Yes, yes, please. Make sure, make sure everybody calendar that.
Twenty twelfth, two P M, yeah.
Two P M.
And then.
Or not two thirty? No, we, let's be here by two. Because.
August, August twelfth, uh, two P M.
The following day, I, I have a.
Mr. Iblak, be sure you're here August twelfth, okay?
Oh, it's, we're not, we don't see anybody come, anywhere, we can do.
Oh, I think that's maybe, I'm so sorry.
So, um, Madam Faye, we're almost done. Are you going to do executive session?
Do we have executive session?
No, I says, yes, I don't know. So.
I don't have anything. Yes, I think Anne needs to.
So can you have your, yeah.
Um, I.
I'm sorry, it's all on your meeting. Oh, yeah, that's, yeah. But can you?
I think we need to, just. She needs to tell us.
Yeah, just.
Okay, so, uh, okay.
One, I don't mind.
Okay, I, I need a, uh, I need an indoor, no, I, I need to get out of a regular meeting.
Yeah.
At the, what time?
We don't have auditors?
One fifty-five, man, not ten, one fifty-five.
Let's get out of, let's get out of a regular meeting and then, um.
Okay, we would.
At one fifty-five.
Regular meeting and going to executive session.
Can I get out now? Okay, hold on, let me just stop the live stream.
Yeah, don't hold on, there's a motion.
Oh, not yet? Okay.
So move to, uh, going to executive session at one fifty-five. At.
One fifty-five.
One fifty-five P M.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Ross. Those, those are favor.
No, no, we have to second.
Those are favor of the motion.
I, I second.
Close the polls. I, you gotta vote. Okay, we're now in executive session, Jamie?
Okay.
Okay, one moment.